Ladies and gentlemen, we're recording now.
How did they vote?
The Monday before.
Yeah.
Well, the numbers are.
What the names are.
But, I mean, give them credit that he actually, there's names there. I mean, we have had clerks where no names at all.
He was.
Do we want to make changes?
You don't know how anybody votes?
I didn't run around. He did. He did. She effing right there, standing right there. I thought it was right there. She threw her stuff down in that bin.
And it wasn't even that she couldn't do it.
No, it was not. It was just because it's our time and not her time. Eileen was. Hey, hey, hey. I wonder if that really told her. Irene, I sat in there. She's about to get her frame. Get your frame out here. I knew you was going to let me. You'll never let that. That's, that's why the. No, but that has happened too. That's your party. No. Do you think they will let me have fun with this? I'm not complaining. They would welcome you.
Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30, and we'll get started with our regular meeting of Marion City Council for the 24th of February, 6:30. Before we do, um, roll call, uh, could I ask everybody to silence phones or turn them off altogether? We've had a number of disruptions, and I know some of you might have things that can't be silenced, but most of us do. All right, roll call.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
Ms. Lang?
Present.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. R. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Neff?
Here.
Ms. Stoneberger?
Here. Okay, next we have the invocation. Uh, do we have Pastor Paul Freedy here? I'm sorry, I don't recall what he was like. I think we've had him here before, but, um.
I can do it.
Okay, Mr. Prater, thank you. We'll have our invocation and then the lead.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, ask you for wisdom and guidance in the meeting that we're about to have, that we would do what's best for the city. We just pray that you'd be with everyone here tonight and all the citizens of Marion and surrounding areas. Endure God, just bless this meeting. Be with us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have, um, summary proceedings on the 10th. Mr. Barr?
Motion approved.
A motion to approve, and Mr. Smith has a second. Ready?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins, or Mr. Neff, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, accepted. Moving on to old business. Item number one, uh, resolution 2025, there's a four, EPM plan, five years.
Resolution to approve the Delaware-Knox Marion-Morrow Joint Solid Waste Management District Solid Waste Management Five-Year Update.
Um, let's see. This comes from your committee, Mr. T. Smith.
Yes, so, uh, tonight's the third reading on this resolution, um, the solid waste management plan. I know, uh, Jenna, did you say your name was, was here to answer any questions if anyone had any? I don't really have anything else to add to this. I know it's been discussed kind of in depth several times, so.
Okay, we'll take questions from council and from the public. If you'll give us your first or last name.
Yes, Jenna Hicks, and I'm the district director of the solid waste district, wasn't able to be here the past two meetings. We're going through this process across four counties. We have 95 municipalities that were trying to get to approve this, so I've been all over the place. But I'm happy to be here tonight. Um, and as said, hopefully you guys have all the information you need, but I am here to answer any questions, uh, if you have. I do want to point out that solid waste management is more than just recycling. Now, recycling is a lot of part of it, but it's also education programs for your city schools, teaching students how to properly dispose of items and why it's important. It's also providing outlets for items that shouldn't go in the trash or the curbside recycling today. Should batteries be put in the trash? No, they shouldn't. We have a program that takes those, keeps your sanitation workers safe when they're out there doing their collection rounds. Should tires be placed in the trash? No, they shouldn't. You would risk your entire truckload of waste getting rejected at the landfill, so it's illegal to dispose of tires in a landfill. We have programs that take tires to handle those. Should Marion City residents have to deal with neighbors that leave trash on their porch causing issues with odor or thermal? No, they shouldn't, and we have programs that we fund that, um, help abate those issues. Should the city of Marion have to cover 100% of the cost of solid waste management? No, you shouldn't have to. Um, we do have a grant program that, uh, for municipalities that have curbside recycling programs, that we would offer funding to help buy recycling trucks or containers or do education. Now, the city of Marion, we've had three grant cycles in the past. City of Marion only applied once. So that left $100,000 on the table that could have been available to go towards recycling programs. Um, you know, and this isn't something that's specific to Marion. You know, uh, city of Delaware, Village of Mount Gillian, Mid-Ohio Sanitation, Romke, all these haulers, they're all going to have to handle this fee increase that we do unfortunately at this point have to put forward. Um, you know, and it's up to those entities to decide what rates they charge to cover those services that they provide for their customers, for their residents. So I'm here tonight asking the city to acknowledge and show support for the programs that we as EPMN offers to the residents of the city by passing a resolution to approve our solid waste. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Lang?
Um, when you said that there's grants available, whose responsibility is that to write those grants or ask for them? Is it you or us or?
It would be those entities that have the curbside program, so it would be the city that's asking those.
Okay, and do we write those grants through you or?
We have an RFP that goes out that has all of the information in it, and then you guys kind of decide what you want to do, put it together. Goes to my board, they go through, they go through a rating process and determine the funding, so.
What time of year do they come out?
So we are last, we haven't done them for a couple of years because the money that we allotted for those, we had three grant cycles and that was all we were able to fund. With this new plan, with the increase in fees, we are going to bring that back. I don't have the timeline. I don't have all the details figured out for that yet, but it will start in 2026. Um, and we do reach out to the communities. There's only a handful that offer the, uh, curbside recycling themselves that we always direct. And then we also offer the program to recycling facilities, so Mid-Ohio Sims, and then now we have Delaware Transfer Station that takes recyclables as well. So, but that's something I know I was told, um, that you guys now have a grant writer on staff, so that's something that, you know, one of the guys, Emily has been attached with, you know, she wrote a tire grant, so.
Are we questioning Mr. Schaubert?
Yeah, um, the last time we went through this, Sims was supposed to receive some funding or was trying to receive some funding for a processor or something like that.
Yes, so that, we have worked with Sims twice now. So for an entity to apply to EPA, a business has to have a government sponsor. So we tried two times to sponsor a grant with Sims to get their equipment, and there were various reasons. One of them, you can't spend money before they allow it, and the equipment that they wanted to replace broke down, and they had to replace it, and that was before they were able to spend funds. Another time EPA said there was some compliance issue, I don't know, so they weren't eligible for funding. So if that's what you're referring to, I don't know.
Yeah, and so back in 2018, we had a new negotiation with Sims because now they're charging us to take our recycling, and the rates were based on getting this processing equipment. Um, so it's unfortunate to hear that twice now they've not received it or their EPA issues compliance. What's that about?
I don't know the specifics of it, but we worked very close together over a long period of time. We did the application, so it was, um, submitted, and then in the end they said, well, you don't qualify for funding, and then they worked with Sims on that. That was a compliance thing I.
That was outside of your, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Mr. Barr and a second from Mr. T. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number two, ordinance 2025-008, commercial district changes to code 2025 ordinance for adult-use cannabis.
All right.
Ordinance amending zoning code section 1143.012, use regulations in the C2 community shopping district. You're admitting into the C3, C4, and C5 commercial districts to include adult-use cannabis dispensaries and recreational marijuana sales.
All right. Yes, this here has come out of the zoning and annexation committee. Uh, everyone that's not here tonight, uh, this is the first reading. It's about, uh, changing some of the zoning codes to support the, uh, use, the legalization now of adult-use recreational marijuana, and this is the first reading. Sir, anybody have any questions about this? Comments? Second reading, yes. First reading was on the 10th, this is now the second reading.
Questions from the council or from the board?
All right, well, I'll just say right now, we just leave this at a second reading and let it go to the third.
All right. Item number three, ordinance 2025-009, ordinance amending zoning code R3 in commercial districts for recovery housing.
Ordinance amending existing Marion City code 1137.011, use rec, use regulation in the R3 multi-family district in section 1143.0123A, 2, C dash 3, Central Core, and 1143.014A, C dash 4, Central Frame District, Business Districts, who allow recovery housing.
All right, this here, this comes out of zoning and annexation committee. Uh, we had our first reading on the 10th. This is pertaining to the recovery housing. I think we had some issues last year on council where this was first brought up, and is there anybody in the crowd or on council here that has any thoughts on this issue? This is to like make it correct the zoning code, so it's, we have the, the, we have the facilities that help people to recover from their drugs away from neighborhoods that have housing with children in close nature, like on Cortland Avenue. So this is a second reading, and, uh, I just say we leave it right here and wait, go on to the next council meeting for the third reading.
No objections? Well, do that. Thank you, Mr. Prater. Uh, I think you've got one more.
Yeah, all right. Here's another one.
I'm sorry, item number four, ordinance 2025-01, 010, to amend zoning, new definitions, 2025.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1123.01, definitions to add definitions for opioid treatment program, office-based opioid treatment programs, recovery housing, levels one through three recreational and/or adult-use cannabis and recreational use slash adult-use cannabis dispensaries.
All right, this here goes back to some things that came out of, uh, uh, city planning. Goes back, I think to what it was talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that place on, uh, West Church where they rezoning to find a places where these opioid treatment facilities can be located and adult-use recreational. So this is all part tied in with the other two. This is a first reading. Anybody here have any comments on it? Thoughts? We do, yes. No, it's the second reading. This is the second reading. Yeah, we've had the first reading, this is the second one, and, uh, we'll go, I just suggest that we would move this to the third reading at the next council meeting.
Well, yeah, we can do the second. Ready? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item number five, resolution 2025-07, Trex can move EPM.
Uh, resolution expressing the city of Marion, Marion Council's endorsement and acknowledgement that the Trex transfer will be an economic development project.
And this comes from your committee, Mr. R. Smith?
I think, uh.
Sorry.
We voted two to one. I think we can move that on to, uh, legislation committee.
Back to, yeah.
Yeah, Legislation Codes Committee sent us to council with a recommendation that is approved by a two to one vote.
Okay.
You know, I will say that, uh, we did get some pictures, um, emailed out today that showed the retail space and the improvements that are being done to, uh, the retail space and merchandising and the separation between the ice cream shop and actual retail store, so I do appreciate those pictures.
Thank you particularly in time for us to take a look into that. I know I got them just a few hours before, um, so again, thank you for taking a look at that.
Your name?
Mahir Gassarovik on behalf of Yashmi Food Mart. So Yashmi Food Mart was, it was originally Megamu. Um, the current owner purchased the property in late 2024, um, and it was, uh, ran as an ice cream shop all the way up until October 31st, 2024. Um, up until that point, I believe our revenue was about 191,000, um, just strictly with ice cream shops. We had about two employees at that time. Um, since then, uh, we have invested $50,000 specifically for the renovations of this convenience store. Uh, the total building is about 3,000 square feet, um, and as Mr. Neff said, that we flagged photos to show the separation between the ice cream shop and the convenience store, um, specifically there's essentially three ways to get ice cream, and this is an important topic for us, specifically because we understand the sensitivity between selling alcohol and having an ice cream place right next door. Um, so there's essentially three ways to get ice cream there. Uh, there's a drive-through, which was included in the photos as well. Um, there's two front windows there, um, so those two opportunities allow someone to purchase ice cream without ever having to step into the convenience store. Um, the third option would be if someone wanted to go inside the convenience store, of course, and while they were checking out it, they decided they wanted ice cream, they could order there as well. Um, so now where, where we're at now is we have three employees, one additional one. Uh, we plan if we are awarded the liquor permit to expand to five to eight employees total. Um, and the liquor permit is definitely substantial to our revenue projection, which is 600,000 total. Um, without the liquor permit, we're estimating about 380,000 to 400,000. Uh, give or take alcohol being 30, 40% of those sales takes us to about 600,000 of revenue. Um, based off that, with the 5.75% on that, I estimate about 20,700 in sales tax to the state of Ohio annually. Um, with about 1.5%, looking back to the county, it's about 5,400 as well. Along with unemployment tax, if we have the calculations for two full-time employees and three full-time employees, uh, my calculation comes out to about 81, uh, let's see, 81,406 of wages annually, uh, which comes out to the employer to be about 2,849, and withholding state contribution to the state, um, with also an employment tax contributing another 2,197. Um, so we believe that, um, our mission here of, um, trying to expand from, uh, a seasonal model of ice cream into a convenience store with the addition of liquor will allow us to grow to about five to eight employees, which will hopefully trickle down to more households in Marion, um, and, um, assist with the employment and that way. So I think that covers everything that I wanted to address. If anybody has any questions, please ask.
I just want to clarify because we went over the same thing in committee, and then you said the same thing tonight that you changed in committee. And what you said tonight was that you wanted to grow to $600,000, the sales.
No, no, it's 600,000 is if we get the liquor permit.
Right, so I had asked you that in committee, and then you had changed that, that it would grow $600,000.
Six, 600,000 just with that addition of the liquor permit itself?
Correct, because that's the only way that your numbers worked.
Is it the addition of alcohol or the, my, my, 600,000 of total revenue is, again, as we said, we don't want to conservative estimate. Without the liquor, I, I can't say for sure, but I'm sure the convenience store in Marion, I believe, is anywhere from that size going to be about 380,000. Um, that's going to be with or without the liquor permit itself. With the addition of liquor permit, that's typically for convenience store, uh, brings revenue up 30 to 40%. Um, so, so that's where the 600,000 total number was, so if I didn't clarify that at that committee.
Okay, so I just, I want to clarify with you what the 600 means.
600,000 is the total revenue that we believe the convenience store will generate in total.
Independent from the ice cream or in addition to?
Completely independent.
Okay.
Completely independent.
Okay.
Uh, we believe that if, we believe the sales for the ice cream should be similar to what it was in 2024, um, potentially even higher than 191,000 considering, I'm assuming we'll have more foot traffic as well. Um, so if we did 191,000, that's completely separate from the 600,000. This is strictly for the convenience store itself.
Okay, and then my other question for you, and again, the city does not get anything with taxes you pay to the state. The city doesn't get anything for sales tax you pay to the county. The city only gets 2% of the wages that are created, which are, by your numbers, are going to be about 1,600, $100 a year that the city would get if this were to pass.
Um, you see, the 2% is coming from what total number?
Of the wages that would be created.
81,000 of 2.7%, which I believe is the new rate for an employer, which is about 2,197. Uh, with the 2%, then your calculation of 1,600%.
Correct. And so, so my question in when we're talking about the amount of sales tax that you're going to, going to generate, do you think that that's going to be additional sales tax to the county? Or do you think that the other three locations on that same corner are going to sell less?
I can't say for certain if the other locations are going to have any sort of implications to their financial, be it more positive, more negative. I, I don't know the implications.
I mean, wouldn't you think it would just make sense that if you are walking or driving to that intersection to purchase alcohol, that you're not attracting new people, you are drawing from the same people that are already there?
Well, the, the addition of the convenience store, I mean, that is, that's a huge addition to foot traffic itself. I mean, that's going to bring new people to an ice cream shop regardless. I believe there's going to be more foot traffic just now having the convenience store there. Uh, the city of Van Villa, if a neighbor is affected by that, if negatively or positively, that'll transition to this location, so I don't think that the revenue or the city with taxes is going to change regardless.
I'm talking total sales tax.
I, I, I don't see how it's going to increase or decrease for the city.
No, I'm talking for the county. So county sales tax.
Right, 1.5%. I have, I, I thought the state's sales tax is 5.75, with about county adding a 5, 1.5 for a total of 7.25 for the state of Ohio.
Okay, so what I'm asking you, that number's going to stay relatively the same, total. It's just now going to be divided up between four people instead of three.
That number is going to grow if we have more employees, of course, and if we transition to six, seven, eight now, that number is only going to grow.
Okay, I'm talking sales tax to the county.
Sales tax, I mean, revenue, 600K is a conservative amount. I mean, I'm a, revenue, the goal of the business, of course, is to increase revenue every single year. Year by year, I don't think that revenue's going to decrease.
Mr. Prater?
Yeah, let's, if you use that logic, that way you wouldn't bring nothing into town. Let's say that there was another, we have a hardware stores in Marion, and you bring another hardware store in, then we'd say, well, that's not going to bring any additional, uh, uh, revenue to the county because it's just going to be divided up. We're not going to sell any more hardware. It would, and, and, but saying, what I'm saying is that the logic he was using, Mr. Erz, uh, you wouldn't bring anything in because, you know, you're going to sell the same amount of alcohol, or you're going to sell the same amount of hardware, or whatever it is. So what, there's no logic to it. You can, you know, unless suddenly some, everybody says, I'm going to buy a lot of hardware, and everybody's hoping for hardware. But, but I mean, if you go by the total amount of sales, I understand.
Yeah, my, our goal is that what we're bringing to the city of Marion is, albeit just a handful of jobs, additional wages for residents of Marion.
Mr. Smith?
So, okay, so I look at it that either A or B is going to happen, is that A, the same amount of alcohol is going to be sold on that, on that corner. Or B, more alcohol is going to be sold on that corner. And so A, we are going to negatively impact the people who are already there. Or B, we're going to negatively impact the community because we're pushing and selling more alcohol. So either way, it's a lose, is the way that I see this coming in.
My only rebuttal to that, Mr. Ratliff, is that our intention here is to bring a handful of jobs to the city of Marion. I can't project if, if the city of Marion is going to grow itself, I can't project if neighbors are going to be harmed or improved. I just know that more foot traffic will be at this certain location, which will in turn allow us to hire additional people, which will then grow our sales, of course.
Mr. Teasman?
This, this was kind of the issue that I think I was trying to explain in committee to where the liquor license, getting them the standard way and going through that way would, that's what gives the liquor license, in my opinion, some value. So the other people who are operating businesses on that corner, they're going to lose business if another store that's selling liquor opens up. And you've kind of gone through a different strategy to get the liquor permit.
So we did speak about the, I believe it was 39 available, the C9s are all taken. The only way that we could potentially have any sort of chance at our liquor license is if we go this route, of course, unless we can find someone in the city of Marion that's willing to sell their license, of course. Without that, this is the only option that we have left for, as a planner, to attempt to get the liquor license.
Mr. R. Smith, did you have a question or not?
I was just going to ask if, if you anticipate Yashvi to be a type of a magnet store, to draw people in, which would increase traffic for the whole corner?
I mean, I do, and actually, if I had, I have the manager here, I'd like to introduce him. I'd like to mention some of the things that they do for the city as well, so you can kind of just get introduced to it. He's here all the time.
My name is Avinash Bhatt. Yes, what is your position?
So what can we bring foot traffic specifically for? What can we promote to the city of Marion, our location, some of our contributions and stuff?
Okay, so we do every, every summer, we have almost 200, 200-plus children are coming from the school for ice cream for them. And for the liquor, like, there is a nine-to-nine store. We open nine o'clock, they're closing nine. The other store are open 10 o'clock. So we are not open like that, that much, because the ice cream customer are coming last nine o'clock after, they are not coming for ice cream. So we have main business is ice cream store. But if I'm coming with my children, and my children be taking the ice cream, and I need some beer, so I want to go another store for that. That's why we have, for the people convenience too. And for us, that is a good business for us too. That's why we have. And the city have, like, we, we do, any support, like, anything like city donation, we do everything like that too.
I think what generates, I guess, the difference between us and others is, I suppose, the convenience that he does mention, that if someone is there strictly for an ice cream or wants hot pizza of a specific brand, that way they can kind of combine all three at the same time without having to go across the street.
Yes.
So that's, that's foot traffic that we do plan to bring, of course. And I think, I guess that's what this relationship does from competitor across the street.
Any other questions or comments from the council, Mr. Smith?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand what you're saying is that if somebody comes for the convenience store, they can get the ice cream and the pizza, which they can't get anywhere else on that block there. Is there another pizza store there?
There is a, another store, pizza, but they do only deliveries. They don't take any customers, not, not walking customers.
Okay.
Nearby, super, same lot, same apartment, but they do only, like, that means deliver the pizza.
That's the closest ice cream shop nearby.
Ice cream store, it's ice cream store on, I think, so five minutes drive, you know, this is where. Yeah, five minutes drive, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The unique presentation is, I guess, a one-stop shop that needed to take care of all of it without having to dispose waste time, albeit it's fairly close and untoo far. But I think that's what could separate us from others.
Thank you.
Of course. Anything further?
Anything else? Any comments or questions from the public? Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, Mr. Smith has another thing, and I want to make sure before.
Not for, not for them, just for council.
Okay, before you go on, though, gentlemen, if we could make sure we have your names and addresses for the public record, just that's what I.
My name is Avinash Bhatt, and I believe you need another 215, Landway Drive.
Thank you.
General Nan drove the store.
Thank you.
And again, Mahir Vassarovik, counsel for Yashvi Food Mart.
Mr. Smith, come ahead.
I was just going to recommend that we, I was not able to locate it, and maybe Mr. Schaub or Mr. Ratliff might know where you can get this, but we should find out how many Trex liquor licenses have been approved within the city before, before we look at, look at this one any further.
I believe one.
There's only been one?
Yes.
This is the third.
This is the third. We approved the first one, not approved the second one, and then this is the third. The first one was at the corner of Fairground and Main.
The first one was part of Paul Lane and 301.
You're right, you're right.
That was one moving into the city, from township into the city.
Correct. And the second one was CJ's, I believe, that they had add, you know, it was a tobacco store that they wanted to add liquor to, which I just think is different to the ice cream shop that you want to add liquor to.
Certainly, you're already going there to purchase things that you need an ID for.
So that's why they put that one, that's why it's for the convenience store, not per se, the ice cream shop.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Do you have this, the second reading?
Do you have this, the second reading, Mr. Smith?
First reading.
First reading, first, first reading. Mr. R. Smith made that. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six, ordinance 2025-014, transit drug testing policy.
All right. Go ahead.
Ordinance approving and adopting city of Marion, Marion, Ohio, area of transits, drug and alcohol policy, number 2025-01, on file in the transit department.
From you, Mr. Teasman?
Yep, this is just updating the policy that's on file at the transit department per ODOT regulations. Just giving it an update, and I have nothing really further to add. Do you have something to add, Mr. Smith?
Name and title, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie Welch, Kansas City.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken, I believe this was passed out of committee with an emergency clause.
It was, yes.
Oops. So it would have a section three to let it be passed by the earliest time permitted by law as an emergency.
That's already been added, so we don't need to amend it, correct?
Well, it's not, it's not on what's in front of us, is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've actually done this both ways. It passed committee with the emergency, and I think we need to get this rolling so we can get it passed. So I asked the law director, do we need to amend this, or is its passage out of committee with that okay?
In insurance, I would say to pass it again with the same amendment, if anybody knows. I don't know if I was here for that committee meeting, but I remember one was stated on the record, the exact language that was going to be used, that we also had any other, at that time, there was an emergency clause from another ordinance that we did, and we read into the record. I'd notified Law Director Russell that that needed to make sure to put that section. Once it did, in this area, I believe it is the same, and so I just don't think it made it to it.
So, yeah, it's on the very next one. So I'll make that as an amendment to add an emergency clause to it as a section three with the standard language.
Section four of the R2, right.
That this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of the public peace, welfare, and the safety of the city of Marion and inhabitants thereof. And for the further reason that the drug and alcohol policy update must be filed immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor, provided it receives the affirmative vote of two-thirds of all members elected to council, it shall become effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Mr. Schaub?
Point of order first, and I will second. Should it not just be replacing section two? Because section two is the annexing clause.
It should.
So instead of your amendment adding a section three, it's?
Yes, that will replace section two, and I'm not saying all that again.
Right. I will second that.
Okay, we have first from Mr. Ratliff, a second from Mr. Schaub, and somebody may need to repeat something, I'm not sure. You got it all?
Mr. Schaub, second.
Mr. Schaub, second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So after the clerk reads it, we'll.
Yes.
Ordinance approving and adopting the city of Marion, Ohio, Marion area transits, drug and alcohol policy, number 2025-01, on file in the transit department, as amended.
Make a motion to suspend further readings.
Second.
The motion to suspend further readings, and a second by Mr. Ratliff, and a second from Mr. Teasman.
It may be tiki-tacky, but the heading should have the emergency declaration in it, as he read it. But I think that's.
And declaring an emergency as amended.
There you go.
Mr. T. Smith, you still seconding that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. T. Smith?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt from Mr. T. Smith, and a second from Mr. Barr. And then the reading?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is item number seven, ordinance 2025-015, ordinance to amend zoning, existing definitions, 2025.
Ordinance amending zoning code 1123.01, definitions to update definitions of family and tourist home.
All right. Yes, this comes out of zoning and annexation, and this is put forward from city planning. And this is amending the definitions of the two items mentioned here, family and tourist home. I just, nobody minds, I'll just read this. Here's the amendment. A person living alone, two or more persons, regardless of relationship by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship, living together, and what's sliced out here, or as a single housekeeping unit, that's what has been removed. And a dwelling unit, a group occupying nursing home, rest home, convalescent home, halfway house, recovery house, defined by the high revised code, booming house, lodging house, looming house, and other fraternity or sorority house considered a family within this zoning code. And then the other amendment here on this one, that's a tourist home, is important because there's a lot of Airbnb's, and it's really important, could bring in a lot of tax revenue. A building or part thereof other than a hotel, motel, boarding house, lodging house, or rooming house for lodging is provided for transients by the property owner. What's slashed out here is a resident family in the home. And a residential unit compensation for periods less than 30 days, owner occupancy is not required. Also, reference to short-term rentals, bed and breakfast or vacation rentals. So anybody have any questions about these amendments here? This is the first reading. Got that one right, I think. Okay, and I just successfully move it to the second.
All right. Moving to the first, next, or next time is the second. Item number eight, ordinance 2025-016, RTP, ordinance 2025.
Ordinance to establish a recreational trails program, RTP grant, through the state of Ohio's Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, and authorize the service director to apply for recreational trails program grant and administer the grant and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang, this comes from bylaws?
This came from our grant writer, Ms. Brown, and this is just to establish recreation, outdoor trails, I think is continuing on in the Lincoln Park area. Am I correct? If you could please give some more detail on that?
So we can ask for up to $100,000 for this one, or just, it's too harsh.
100 or 150?
100,000.
The match?
There is a 2% match that you can use.
So you say 100,000, but the grant says 150.
And we said 150 in committee, I'm almost sure.
I'm 99% sure, so I'm very excited to type that.
And this has to get, if I remember right, this has to get done.
You have to submit this one by March.
I make a suggestion that we just leave it up to 150, and then if it is the 150, we apply for that. If that's only the 100, then either way, we'll make it okay if we pass it that way.
Mr. Barr?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
I'm not going to second it.
Motion to suspend three readings, and a second by Mr. Prater.
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries, Mr. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Barr, and Mr. Prater has.
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaub?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up is item number nine, ordinance 2025-017, SRTS ordinance 2025.
Ordinance to establish a safe routes to school SRTS grant through the state of Ohio's Department of Transportation, ODOT, and authorize the service director to apply for safe route to school grant and administer the grant and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang?
This also is a grant that was applied for, is being applied for, by our grant writer, Ms. Brown. And this is to put in sidewalks, and if you can, again, name the streets.
So it's going on, it's a sidewalk for a path, engineers are still figuring it out.
Okay.
It's going up Wrightwood, Presidential Bradford, East Polonet. It's in two school districts, so we can ask up to 1 million with no match.
Double the points. And this is March 7th?
Yes, this one is March 7th.
Ms. Brown, are there school districts, grant?
Grant and Benjamin.
Or something.
that to $15,000.
Thank you. Any questions?
And if we could extend rules, that would be fantastic.
Ms. Lang?
I make a motion to suspend the rule.
The three readings ruled, and Mr. R. Smith, you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries. And Mr. Prater, I saw your hand up.
Motion to approve.
And Mr. Prater with motion to approve. Mr. T. Smith with a second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, 2025-017. Next up is item number 10, ordinance 2025-018, appropriations amendment, ordinance 21725. Am I reading it right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ordinance making adjustments to appropriations for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Also, I have a finance... Ms. Lang?
This came out of the finance committee with a 3O recommendation to approve. Ms. Court, right, if you'd like to add additional comments to this?
Yes, this is just cleanup for this year. You'll probably see a lot less of these now that we can move money in between based on the way the budget would improve for 2025. But the general fund is balanced. We need to purchase some software and some technology that was not included in the budget. So, we need additional funds, but we have a vacancy currently in our IT support, so that is a wash. It has not been hired yet, so the production will be covered with that savings for this year. There's some unemployment where an employee who left us last year, so there's still some charges that are flowing through, and those two are from grants. And then items that were not included in the budget, but would be used, our carryover of our permanent improvement money, would be to expand the locker room area for the female officers. Let's get a little bit tight in there, because they allow women officers, no women. Dining boards, last year we were going to get those purchased, we didn't get those done last year, so those need to get purchased here shortly, so that we can use that, with the two dining boards at the pool for the summer. And the Sonicall is part of that software request, but that item is more of a, it's more than the $5,000 software, so we put that, our, excuse me, the structure, so I put that under the 401 out of the commission money as well. The $20,000 we talked about for the nature preserve, it worked for everything over the land bill, so there was not enough money in the original budget, so that would be an expansion. And then the capital improvement board, the garage fund is being reduced by $12,000. That was because the lifts that we purchased came in at a lower price, so I just reduced that to $15,000.
Thank you. Any questions?
And if we could extend rules, that would be fantastic.
Ms. Lang?
I make a motion to suspend the rule.
The three readings ruled, and Mr. R. Smith, you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the three readings carries. And Mr. Barr, you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the three readings carries. Mr. R. Smith?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And Mr. Barr, you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Ratliff? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? I'm sorry, Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt. And moving on to item 11, ordinance 2025-019, farm lease.
This was a funny one. Ordinance authorizing service director to advertise, accept bids, and enter into a contract for the lease of certain farmlands owned by the City of Marion and adjacent to the Marion Municipal Airport and declaring an emergency.
This comes out of airport lands and buildings, Ms. Lang?
This came out of the airport committee last week with a 3O recommendation. It is to put out bids for farmers to bid on the land around the airport to farm. And Mr. Arnold is here, if anybody has any questions, concerns on that.
He's back.
I have a question, Mr. Arnold. We're wanting to get these public notices out soon, right, so the bids can happen.
Yes, I'd like to know about March 4, April 8, and Matt Arnold.
Thank you. Mr. Shawber?
Yeah, you're getting really late in the year. Do you by chance remember what the previous per acre was?
This is not late in the year, this is for next proceeds.
Okay, 26, okay. So, do you remember what the previous per acre price was?
We're currently on a contract for 267.
It's 267, okay.
Mr. Brown?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
And Mr. Neff?
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Neff? Motion to suspend three readings ruled. And from Mr. Brown.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend three readings carries.
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, and looks like Mr. Neff has a second.
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12 is next, ordinance 2025-020-FY25-RW13-31, TWC rehab and lighting.
Ordinance authorizing the service director to apply for FY25-26 FAA and ODOT aviation grant funds, accepting grant offers, advertising for bids, and entering into a contract for design phase for runway 1331, surface rehabilitation, nav aids and lighting, and design phase for surface rehabilitation, taxiway C of Marion Municipal Airport, and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Lang?
This came out of the airport committee with a 3O recommendation to approve. This is for resurfacing runway 1331 and addressing the lighting on that runway. It is a 95 grant funding. The city's responsibility is 5%. If we resurface it, it will keep us from having to completely reconstruct it. If there's any further questions, then anybody else from Mr. Arnold?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Arnold, resurfacing it now and catching this ahead of time is going to save us about how much as opposed to tearing it down and rebuilding it.
I'm not an engineer, but...
Right. And this is also something that we want to get in as soon as possible, right?
And it's design phase on this, so we're looking at construction, so I'll be back here next year asking for the construction grant as well.
Okay. And it will be back by some time, so 5% in the last progress. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings.
The motion to suspend three readings, and Mr. Prater has a second?
Mr. R.?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend three readings carries. Ms. Barr?
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Neff?
Second.
Second?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shawber?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Emergency 20, so we are moving on to others. Mr. Ratliff?
I just want to bring up the parking across the street, the back end parking. When it went in, there was supposed to be a test phase, and I don't know, when it first went in, I said I think it's the worst idea of any parking I've ever seen in my entire life. I guess it's that way in Lima also. I've never personally seen another place that has back end parking the way that we do here. I don't know how long that our test phase is, but it's been several years. I personally think that it is as dumb as it was the day that it went in, and I would encourage us to change it to regular pull-in parking.
You talking about right across the street? It's one half a dozen on the other, when you're backing in, you've got to back out into that traffic.
I mean, personally, I think it's even illegal backing if you, like, were to get into an accident.
Look, couldn't it be if you're backing either way, you could get into an accident?
Are we suggesting parallel parking? Because that's a forte of mine. Thank you. Mr. Shawber?
So, there was a study, but now that I'm sitting here thinking about it, isn't it a moving violation if you back in, back out onto a state route? And isn't that a state route? So, there's nothing, so there is something we can do if that's not, something we can cite somebody for?
We've just now got the city council.
Ms. Ma?
I'll be glad to have some of those discussions with the engineer and streets department. Difficult sometimes to pull like that and back in, and we have, I think, all you're going is talking about making a pull-in parking instead of back in. So, there would be some logistical things to that. Almost all newer cars now have a backup warning system if you start to back out and a car coming. So, we had it on Main Street that way, and it seems to be working okay, so I'll come in and back, and we'll talk about it and see what they think, and this might be a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters?
Since y'all talked about fixing the roadway, I wanted to want you to give this red light...
If you need, you need to come up and speak here at the podium, please, sir. Thank you. Name and address?
My name is Jameson, I'm a resident of Marion, Ohio.
Uh, street address?
And if you get the red light out here, I noticed that there's a lane that's dead, you know, because this lane right here, there's always people parking like this right here for the stores, and you cannot go this way, because you have to wait for this vehicle to turn, and then you can cut off if you know what I'm talking about. And right up here is a pond south across the street. The red light right here, there's like two lanes, one's to go straight, the other's to turn. One right here to go straight, it's always blocked because cars parked in front of these stores. So, can y'all do something about that, since y'all are the city council? And the reason why, main reason why I'm here is I've been fighting the drug use on Murray Street since I moved here, except for then, a thousand yards, and with Elmwood School. And every window in my house got busted out because I finally kept reporting this drug use, and the other truck got in. So, then things started moving forward. They got mad busting my windows out. I about froze to death last week. So, I brought that to y'all attention tonight, wanted y'all to help replace my windows, Wanted y'all help replace my windows since the value of the seat, please.
Colin?
I had a couple other items to bring up. We have a vacancy in city planning. Roger Ruth has turned down his resignation around the sixth ward. So, Ron, or if you know of anybody in the sixth ward that might be interested in being on city planning, or if anybody knows anybody in the sixth ward, send me an email, and we'll see about filling that vacancy. Just a reminder, I think that you guys all got emails, but there'll be kind of a soft opening at the rec, March 3rd. Unfortunately, I won't be here next week. I'll be in Ireland. So, any of you all that can make it would be great. I'm sure that they would like to have a support of city council since we all made this happen together. So, we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Court Reck, you had your hand up?
Two weeks back, you guys approved this ordinance already. But there was a clerical error on it, so I just wanted to point it out to the clerk and make the adjustments. So, it was for equipment, it's for the grant, the lighting project at the baseball field. So, we put 5403, and it should've been 5304. It does say equipment, but I just wanted, in the record, that we had it changed and that the clerk...
Mr. Shabber?
So, fund number 5403 exists?
That's the expense account.
Oh, so it's...
No, it does not.
It does not exist?
That number does not exist. We created very specific accounts when I asked the others' office to create those. I asked for the crate supplies, equipment, and purchase services, I think. And he created that account, but when we typed it up, we traced those numbers.
So, I'm thinking that it needs...
So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention so we could correct it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we need something different.
Well, it's typically a clerical error, and the only person who can change the clerical error is the clerk. But I did not want to make any changes without your knowledge.
I think personally, what we should do is take a roll call vote, that the intent of council was to pass it with a fund that could get the project completed.
It's the expense account.
And I think we should just take a roll call vote that the intent of council was to pass it the way that it is corrected before, so that the project can move. I don't think anybody here intended money to come out of it.
No. And we didn't, I just wanted to make sure that it was brought to your attention that it was a clerical error.
So, that's what we're trying to establish, is what is a clerical error thing?
I mean, I think we've set a precedent in the past, too, that the intent of council is what is important also. And I just think if we take a roll call vote that that was our intent, that would clear up anything.
We just didn't want to change it without a break?
Greatly appreciate it.
Would the law director's office have any comments?
You would either be taking a roll call vote, or I think you would make a vote, a motion, a motion and have council deem it that it was a clerical error based on the information now provided and transpose the numbers, or just take a roll call vote. Either way.
Either way. Thank you.
Hold the roll?
Sure.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ratlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shabber?
Yes.
Miss Lang?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Okay. Being corrected? Clerical error? To the decision? Any other matters?
Yeah, it's different. Fourth and Clover Avenue. I've got two things that I think may really need to be addressed. I drive down Church Street, every crossroad on Church Street from almost the city limits to Green Hill, has flashing stop signs. Indiana Avenue gets almost as much traffic with kids walking. I don't see anything on Indiana Avenue except an occasional stop sign. Think you might want to look into that before some kid gets hurt. Second thing is, I noticed that last year, and we're getting into spring again, all of these little electrically powered kids' toys out in the street. Bicycles, cars, we're getting into spring, they're going to be out again. They're on Indiana Avenue, they're on Mount Vernon Avenue, they're on Church Street, they're the ones that I go on regularly, I see them out there. But not parents, but that supervision. Some of these kids can't be 10 years old. And they're out on the battery-powered skateboards, they're out on powered trikes and bikes on the street. Bad enough on the sidewalk when they run into us old people, but tough on the streets when the old people are driving in cars. I think it might need to be looked at review. Something needs to be done to stop before somebody does it.
I agree with you on the electronic...
You got it all over your neighborhood.
Yes. And sometimes I see kids not more than 10 or 11 zooming by at my house 30 miles an hour. And if it gets to be dusk, they could be in danger. I mean, it's one thing if you're on a bike that goes like normal, but even then, you gotta have reflectors. But I know what you mean. There's a danger to it, and I understand.
Need to think about it.
I believe also that there's a requirement that motorized vehicles have to have registration. Is that correct?
And usually a license operated. These are kids, I understand it in your backyard, I understand it on the sidewalk in front of your house. They're not in the sidewalk, and they're not in the backyard. Someone's going to get hurt.
Yeah, I know in the 80s, my youngest brother had mopeds, and it was like a moped gang, and they all had to have licenses. They had to get something approved and licensed. I'm pretty sure...
I can't speak on that. So, a lot of the vehicles that you are seeing are not contained in any definition in the city code or the revised code to meet a definition of a motorized vehicle. So, you also have these scooters that are not necessarily a service chair, that are now the front back wheels that are also motorized. Those things can go up to 25 to 45 miles an hour. We've had individuals get in accidents that were driving those at night on certain places. Our criminal revised code section does not characterize those individuals as far as the actual vehicle they're driving. They're not contained in any definition. The problem you have is the legal environment, the law changes slowly. Innovation and technology changes faster. We're going to keep having this problem until, as you guys have done in other housing code sections and things like you have tonight, definitions need to be changed to add those definitions on what scooters and things that you want to add into the Marion City Code and then pass an ordinance, and then there you go from there. But to look into that, that's something that is not covered right now. And so, having them register them on the plate, whether child endangering a criminal statute will cover a 10-year-old riding a motorcycle, probably not. If it's deemed that that individual is old enough to be able to ride a motorcycle, not accompanied by an adult, the criminal statute goes based on parenting and reasonfulness that that parent has deemed that that child is able to self-sustain. Our cases with child endangering involve young children that cannot take care of themselves and diapers that are outside the house, and they let that child get out unattended. So, the question you have is, is it would be a deep dive into our city code and wait for the state revised code to start changing and defining a lot of these.
But I say one last thing.
Yep.
I think we better dive in now before you have to dive into the court case. Thank you.
Actually, that's a good topic. Our council clerk right now is working with the new company, work new codified ordinances, and that's certainly something that he can bring up to them. And they have reference material from other communities that may have dealt with this already that we can look at as a sample for ours. So, that's something he can make a note of and ask specifically while they're looking at those codified ordinances.
Thank you.
Julie, I'm Ms. District Director. And like I promised, according to Night Moves Report for January, as expected, the numbers are down. We have 51 people ride Night Moves in January. This month, we're taking a lot of people from work, home, or from home to work. So, we have 31 people use our $5 fare, and only eight use the $10 online pass. We do have one advertising that came in, and then we had one contract for two hours. Our six months is up March 3rd, and we'll be reviewing with Mayor and District Director. And I anticipate some changes just from some of the things that we've seen, as in like picking people up from work. So, we'll look forward to that.
Okay. Any questions?
We would also like to see what our summers, I mean, we started this in October, so that six month doesn't really allow us to have a summer month when it's really busy at the hotels and people wanting to get downtown. So, as we tweak the program and do different things with it, it may look different, but we really want to get into the summer months and see what that's going to show us, too. So, as we move along the process, it may not just stop in March. We may tweak it and do some different things, but we really would like to see those summer months and see what's going to happen to get a good indication of a whole...
I think that's a good, I think that consideration should be given.
Miss Lang?
I had the opportunity on Friday to spend a couple hours with the transit department, and I actually rode the bus from I Ward for most of the afternoon. Julie's in the process of passing out surveys, and so I took a considerable amount of surveys with me on the bus and actually talked to the riders on the bus. They had several suggestions. My biggest surprise was that out of the, I can't remember if there was 14 or 15 riders that day, but none of them were aware that there was an evening bus route available on Thursday, Fridays, and Saturdays that could get them to Myers, or Walmart, or Kroger's. The one guy, one gentleman runs out of pop on the weekends, and he can't get to Kroger's to get his pop. And he was quite excited when I said, well, we have a Night Moves bus that actually is on your route and this such. The comments that I received back from the riders was that on Thursday, Fridays, and Saturdays, if they want to go anywhere, they have to call taxi service that costs them anywhere from $10 to $18, depending, which just blew my mind, if they want to go someplace. And that's just one way. So, a round trip would be, you know, $20 to $36. And when I told them that they could buy, you know, get it right for $5 or $10 for all night, they were very willing to pay the $10 to get to and from where they needed to be. They had a lot of suggestions, which I discussed with Ms. Welsh after I got done writing. Some of them were very good, and I also gave her some suggestions on some things that I thought we should implement, like having the route cards available on every bus, so the riders, you know, they could be passed out to the riders so that they are aware. I think, I think I made a comment several meetings ago that I didn't feel that we were making enough advertising, that we weren't putting enough information out there. A lot of these people that I talked to don't have email addresses, they don't have Facebook accounts. So, I think we need to put more physical information out there, not just at the hotels and this such, but actually on the bus and reach our riders that are actually riding the buses to make them aware that this is available to them.
And I appreciate you taking time to do that. And I'd welcome anyone to come out and ride for an hour, half an hour, whatever you have time for, just to see, you know, what we're doing. And the survey that we're doing is for the TDP, the Transit Development Plan through ODOT, and that's to expand our services to the evening hours. And so, there's lots of questions on there, also about expanding countywide. And the city shared the survey. You guys can take the survey as well. It just helps us to broaden the need, and to show the need, I should say. I know maybe we can share it again in the near future, but it is on the city page about that. There's one more thing I was going to say. I did have a meeting with ODOT today in Casey, we were talking financial stuff, and I did ask them about this six-month trial period, and I wanted to just mention this, because it's not an official six-month trial period. It's, you know, just something that we said that it was a, you know, trial period. It's not something that they are regulating, they're not asking us to give them any reports or anything like that. Anytime you do this, there's a pilot, but we did not ask for funding for this, so therefore we don't have to report any of those findings. But we'll be in touch soon.
Okay, question about your numbers. You said 51 people rode in January. Then you said 31 at $5 and eight at $10, which would be 39.
And I had contract services, and I'm sorry, the rest of that's from there, and I don't have those numbers here. I think that's, what did you say, Thomas, was it 39?
Yes.
So, is it 12 for the contract?
Okay, so, okay, so, the contract service...
Correct.
You counted it in the...
That's correct.
Okay. And how much is the, how much is the contract service?
So, it's 115 an hour, and we have two hours.
Okay. So, revenue would be $535 for the month, right?
I've got $1135 because that's the 600 after that.
And that's what we sold during the month?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Barr?
Was there any update on your meeting with Marion City Schools and the...
Oh, yes. So, we have a signed contract from the law director and from them. I plan to sit down and meet with them to go over more details on that, but we are now in contract, so just like that.
And that would just be a supplemental service?
Correct.
So, if they have bus drivers that are ill or something, and they need additional help, they can call the city, and then we can fulfill that contract.
And, you know, I've worked closely with Law Director Russell, I know he's not here tonight, but on that, and then also, they have passed it through their board as well.
Is this like, you know, let's say a bus driver's sick, and he has like 60 kids on his bus, you guys couldn't do that. Is this like kids that are in special programs?
Correct.
Like what I do?
Exactly.
And special needs, like we have like five band drivers, and let's say one of them's, two of us are off. You guys would take those kids to their appointed destination and back that day?
Yes, that's exactly what this is for.
Yeah, the special...
The special...
Needs kids.
Children.
Yeah.
And some of them have aides that ride with them, and if they have an aide, in the contract, we're requiring them to...
Yeah, they have to have an aide.
Correct.
Yeah, some of them, yeah. But, yeah, it depends on whether or not they're the kids that are being homeless or handicapped.
Ms. Barr?
Just out of curiosity, does it include extracurriculars?
It can.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because I know that there have been some that...
Right.
Maybe even canceled because they're, you know, it's...
Or they brought someone from Delaware County and paid an atrocious amount.
Right. No, this is, the partnership with the schools is an extremely good thing, so...
And you're still in discussions with another school also, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and my boss at the...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lang. Any other matters?
One, yeah, one final thing for me. We've had some terrible weather, and we hope we're out of it now. Just making sure our salt is holding up well.
I just talked to Scott late last week, and I think he had about half left.
Okay, good. Okay.
That'll be on your committee agenda.
Okay. Then next...
I'm glad you decided to call that meeting, Mr. Barr.
We're on to committees. First, Ms. Lang, airport lines of buildings?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Mr. Arsman?
Yeah, we'll put the can do back on the agenda.
Okay.
If we don't have anything, we'll cancel it.
So, so far, you're scheduled for 6:30 then?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Neff, what's the schedule for regulations?
6:35 for a discussion only of the rules of council.
All right. Mr. T. Smith?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Ratlin, public utilities?
I have nothing to call at this time.
Regional planning set for the fourth Wednesday?
Thursday, 7. Thursday, 7.
Thursday, sir?
It's been canceled.
Oh, it's been canceled?
Due to lack of business.
Okay, thank you. So, no regional planning for this week. Mr. Barr, streets and sewers?
You go to salt contracts?
6:40.
6:40, please.
Mr. Prater, going annexation?
Nothing new that I know of at this time.
All right. Ms. Lang?
6:45. I, probation has a ordinance coming through. Old business, and anything that else might pop up between now and today.
Five or six, I guess.
One more thing for me. Just if we could get an update of where we're at with payroll, I think the union was supposed to meet and vote, and where we stand with our payroll clerk and position.
So, currently, we're waiting. We've talked with the union representatives, the regional and the local, put together an MOU that will basically say that it's okay to take the payroll specialists out and take an administrative position that's in there now and turn that into a union position. And they are hopefully going to vote Wednesday. We hope. We're just waiting on that to happen. We've done everything with ADP we can, and they're ready to go once we say yes, let's go. And that's what we're waiting on. So, hopefully, that'll happen Wednesday.
Okay. Can you send us an email and tell us how that vote went?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned at 7:53.
So, he has an M.O.U. understanding saying that they will swap administrative positions on...
It was lying, right?
It's lying.
I sent you an email that played about five pieces of legislation on this afternoon for your committee, grants and all kinds of stuff. I got one in like late this afternoon before I started getting ready for this. It's like, okay, I just started talking over. Police Department of Vehicles that want to give away...
That's all, just John Heidel descriptions.
Finance is Saturday.
Because of the last...
8, 9, 10, 11. And then you said something about probation, and I haven't seen that one yet, so...
So, you reuse giving up an administrative position?
So, I've been in contact. I haven't seen it yet, so now you know they're setting. And it's not Thursday yet.
As a big union guy...
I personally don't think they should, but that's...
Right. As a union guy... Yeah.